I'm gonna step down from that. Is that something you actually?
Okay.
Okay, we're on video, so turn on your cell phones, please. Appreciate it. And it being seven o'clock, vice chair?
Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 10th, 2019 at 7:00 PM with the town hall, 500 Vanowich Way. First on the docket is approval of minutes from October 11th, November 8th, and December 13th. I believe, since not all voting members are here, we're going to...
Hold off.
Hold off on those for another month.
Or two.
Or hopefully one more month. Therefore, second on the docket, first case, is the Abington zoning board of appeals. We'll hear the petition of Dana George, 33 Stetson Street, Whitman, for special permit under 175-21-E4, and variances 175-21-G3, 175-21-G5, 175-21-G6, and 175-21-E3, to convert vacant unit into taproom at 477 Washington Street, properly located on assesses map 23, lot 178, in the CBD district.
Guys?
Gentlemen, this is a continued hearing from last month.
So what's going on now, guys? What's up?
What are you doing already?
Well, we have an idea, but we're gonna hear from you, so...
Yeah, we're actually here to withdraw our request for that particular space.
Okay, hopefully you're still staying in town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Something's come up out of the blue, which potentially is a much better opportunity for us in Abington.
Well, you seem to be jumping around from...
So, yeah, I know, we certainly appreciate that. This literally developed within the last week.
Excellent.
And long-term, we think it's a better option for us.
Great.
It is still in Abington, so you'll be seeing us again at a future meeting with a different application.
Okay. So withdraw without prejudice?
So, we gotta do a motion?
Yes, sure. I'll make a motion to allow the petitioners to withdraw without prejudice.
I'll second that.
All favor.
Aye.
Good luck, guys. We'll see you again.
Yeah, we will.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay. It being before 7:05, is the next petitioner ready?
Yes.
All right, so the Abington zoning board of appeals will hear the petition of 166 Bedford Street Realty Trust, 12 East Washington Street, Hanson, for a special permit request pursuant to 175-21-A, 1A, to allow two accessory apartments on the second floor of existing structure at 166 Bedford Street. Applicant is in the heating and air conditioning business and will use the first floor, 1,800 square feet for his business. Each apartment will be one-bedroom and contain approximately 900 square feet. Property is located on assesses map 23, lot 19, in the highway commercial, R20 zone. I need to excuse myself.
Yes, that's my part.
Okay. To the file. So we have a new filing, correct?
Yes.
No. This is never ending with this one. There's been questions about accessory apartments, from our town lawyer. So Marshall, can you tone in on this, just to view it?
I'll give you the long and short of the dissertation we have here from counsel with regards to accessory apartments, based on definition, table of use, and how it's related to in 175-21-32I, which is in-law. The long and short of everything that she has said is, there is the only accessory apartment is in-in-law in a residence of a single-family in districts 2030, 40HC, CBD, and TC, in a single-family home. That's all there is. It is poorly written and misleading, confusing. In the table of use, it says accessory apartments, plural, but it's not. It's accessory apartment P, because there is only one allowed in a single-family dwelling. Anything else, for instance, what you're looking for is, would be a variance. This gentleman wanted to have apartments mixed with his HVAC business, and has asked for a special permit, because that's what's indicated in HC, in the table of use regulations. He has been misled. It's very, it was very confusing. We have a dissertation here from her based on, and that's her opinion. I'm sorry.
Well, we have been here a couple of times previously, so it's unfortunate, because the accessory apartment isn't really completely defined that well in my law. And so, I guess we could get stuck on the issue of calling it an accessory apartment. In fact, in the matter, it is right next door, there's a patent building with 11 units, and...
But there's not a business there, too, so...
No, there's not a building, no business there, no. So there is a business right next door, so there's business on this side, there's residential on this side, and this would be a mixed use. The board had an issue previously that was expressed, because we were seeking a two-bedroom apartment and a one-bedroom apartment. You'll see, the plan that we presented to you this evening is the two one-bedroom apartments, which would reduce the parking requirement, and also legally, as you suggested, the board takes away the potential that you would have children living in the premises. There are one-bedroom apartments right next door, like I say, I don't think that there are children living in the premises, although I can say definitively, but I think we could draw the conclusion that with one bedrooms, you'd have children in the premises. So what we tried to do with the plans before you that we did, a property, was to show some separation between the business use and the residential use. You'll note that there's a parking space that has been provided to the front of the property, so that there are the three spaces that would require the apartments up above in the front of the property, there'd be no need for residences, the residents to go out back to park, and those spaces would be clearly marked for residents only, and out back would be clearly marked for businesses. Now, as you suggested, we have been here before, and the reason we were here before and not so much to talk about substance, but this plan entails, although we didn't touch on it the last time we were here, the board, the very first time we came, had some concern about how well the project was defined in the petition. We redrew the petition after hearing from the board last month, that the town council felt that the petition should be redrawn, so we immediately resubmitted the petition. And so this is really, if you will, the first hearing that you would speak substantively on the record of what the proposal is. Now, if the board is of a mind and a concern that our petition asking for special permit is not appropriate, I suppose we should ask for a third petition and ask for a variance.
I mean, that's, that is what our town council is saying.
Yeah.
But now you're getting to variances, and variances for us...
Well, let me suggest just before, if I may, that the board look back at the decision on Mr. Gosman, not Mr. Lewis, because that was the subject of two separate and distinct requests for variances. Both times, the variances were a lot, and he's built a nice building, and in fact, Mr. Davidson would like to upgrade the building that's there, perhaps make it a little bit more attractive. You'll see, the plan that's before you has eliminated the front door in favor of a door around the side. He will restructure the front to make it more, more attractive, I would say. He's gonna take away that door, there'll be a big window in the middle, the two windows on either side would be, and it, I would suggest that your bylaws allow for residential use in the highway commercial zone, and you have a special permit. In fact, it says in your final consent, 175-21-1A1, that accessory apartment is appropriate on, on the basis of a special permit in the highway business zone, and also that a detached single-family by way of a special permit, and a two-bedroom or duplex by way of a special permit. So multi-unit dwellings, again, I'm looking at 175-21 subsection four, multi-unit dwellings by special permit. So to be sure if it's a special permit for variance, but honestly, it says multi-unit dwellings, and the relief that's necessary is a special permit, and that's what we've asked for in this petition. And the property next door, Mr. Gosman's property, is a 20,000 square foot property, and there are 11 units, and approved initially, and as he got into the construction, he realized he could put another unit in the building, and he came back to the board and was granted a further variance for the 11th unit. Now, why he needed variances, I don't think it was a use variance necessarily, it was transitional commercial at that time, when he stopped those variances and was granted them, but he needed dimensional variances, and may look back at that decision, because there were probably, as I read it, and I just read it on the computer this afternoon from the registry of deeds, it appears that there were five and possibly six different variances granted. So he's got 11 units on 20,000 square feet.
And when was that?
2014 and 2016, were the two decision dates. So 11 units on 20,000 square feet, we're looking for two one-bedroom units on 10,000 square feet, with a sharp slash office down below of approximately 1,800 square feet. So it's, I would suggest to the board that it's not overcrowding. We actually, if you look at what's required for parking for this type of a configuration, it's about four spaces, maybe five, and we're providing eight spaces on the lot. And again, we've reduced it to two apartments, one to one bedroom, essentially two one-bedroom apartments. Mr. Davidson, you may recall, is in the HVAC business. How many trucks do you have in your business, please?
Um, we own and operate several vehicles. One vehicle is a parked on the property, they're log service vehicles, and they're on the road.
And they go home with you guys?
I don't have a problem gating in between the residential spaces and the commercial space out back, but the thing that concerns me is, all three of the properties, both my neighbors, residential and commercial, all of those buildings were permitted and built in 2014. I'm not sure if it was highway commercial then or not, but the fact is, is that this is, this is a good use for that property. And according to your paperwork, that's the way it was spelled out when I bought this thing. I've owned this thing for over a year, and I'm, my hands are tied apparently on doing any construction or modifying, even to get my, my business, you know, set up in there. You know, my taxes are all paid up, and I'm doing the right thing here, trying to do everything the right way, and I don't see what the real, what the real law is, but it's in the works, it's in the works.
Well, I think, I think it goes back to, like you said, I mean, you bought the property, it wasn't, it wasn't completely done. You're the second owner on it. The, the area has changed over to a transitional, correct? Am I wrong?
It went from TC to HC.
When did it transition? What exact date?
About two years ago.
I have it somewhere, but...
And again, if the board, if it was the board's will, that we came back asking for a variance, we certainly revised our petition to ask for that and re-advertize.
Well, I think, I think the thing here is that, that's, that is what the town attorney's asking for, if I'm reading this correctly.
Correct.
Well, is that her opinion? Is that what you said, Marshall, that's her opinion, or is that, is that the law?
It's not the law, it's her opinion, in all likelihood. She's the one that's going to defend us in court if she's, if we're, if they have made the wrong decision, and there's a, an issue with regards to it. By and large, they're probably gonna go along with what the attorney says, and she came back and, at length, has said that it's a very confusing issue with regards, and this is very poorly written, and there have been, not that it does anything for us right now, but it's going to be, there's gonna be revisions proposed to, so this doesn't happen, because this is most unfortunate.
Again, I mean, we're looking at a piece of property that is built, but not complete.
It doesn't have a certificate of occupancy, it never was finished.
Correct.
And...
And in the meantime, the zoning changed.
Mid, mid-project.
And I don't talk in variance, guys, I mean, you know...
And then originally permitted as a duplex property?
I think originally, it was going to be in TC. It's allowed to be converted to, up to three units, and that's what I believe he intended in the outset. That was in conversion of an existing to accommodate not more than three families, I believe, in TC, was allowed by right when it was, the permit was originally issued, and that's what he intended to do, mallet. And then, something transpired, and he decided, could he change it, reconfigure, and make it two units? Yes was the answer for that, and then he never finished anything. And next I hear, the zoning has now changed from TC to HC, and you've bought it. And now, we're talking, you're talking about mixed use, which would require sprinklers, when anytime now, when you mix residential with commercial, you're sprinkling, and possible use of the fire safety scores, none of this affects these guys here whether or not, and they're talking about, one apartment is allowed in a single-family residence, and this isn't a single-family residence, so that's not what you're looking for. You're looking for two, and a mixed use, which would be a variance, and unfortunately, whether or not they're going to entertain or look upon that, I don't know, but you've asked for a special permit, and I perfectly well understand why you did it, because it's, it appears very straightforward, and it's not.
Well, it's not.
I, I hear you.
Well, is that, I mean, we're supposed to draw and be playing by the rules, that's why I'm coming, just to try and do everything the right way. And he runs out clearly on all these titles and sections and things.
The other, the alternative is that if we were here asking for duplex, it would be simply a special permit, you know, and that's two units, that's two housing units, two apartments.
Yeah, sure, but it's a mixed use.
But it's a mixed use.
Yeah.
But it's a mixed use, and I don't believe the board could tell me differently, if it's there and it's missing. Mixed use doesn't necessarily cause the need for a variance. So the, the use that Mr. Davidson wants to use the property for most is his business, and, and these two apartments upstairs are ancillary to the property, to make the property pay for itself, but the use that he wants to put it to isn't allowed use, and it's just a question of how do we get to a point...
Well, how do you order it?
Getting the apartments approved by way of a variance or a special permit, and again, I would say that if it's the will of the board, because of what town council has chimed in with, that we come back before the board requesting a variance, I'd be more than happy to do that. I, I guess I would want to ask the board, what's your thoughts on, in other words, and if you don't want to answer that, I'm just...
Well, I can tell you one thing, we're very difficult on, we're very difficult on variances, giving out variances. It's very difficult for us, but we have to look at the situation, too. I mean, you bought this property, we're trying to get all the wording right here, from the zoning...
The only thing we're not gonna use is accessory.
Yes, we need to get that wording correct.
Right, 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 the law.
But I mean, it's already built, too. I mean, we have to remember, it's already built.
We're not gonna want to finish this thing, paying for it.
And I think you might recall, the last time we showed you, and I can't seem to find it, but I'm sure it's here, the building permit issued for a duplex, well...
The original building, I thought I had a copy.
Was just duplex.
I've got a copy.
Yeah, I got a copy, I know.
See, the problem we have here, mixed-use dwelling, accessory apartments, lawyer is saying variance. The building's already built, so, I mean, we have to...
Is that bad, or is that good?
Well, it's there, I mean, we have to figure out...
That's the building permit, it says duplex.
They were, you know, and all those properties were...
It started with a triplex and went to a duplex.
The property was paid for, the rent expired, apparently, whatever, but it's a good use for this building. I intend on making two high-efficiency apartments with ample parking. I, I have been denied to, you know, truly use this building since I bought it. I've been missing out on a year's worth of advertising, I could have my sign out there. I mean, I've had to have different insurance policies, construction policies, mind you, just to make sure the property stays insured until it gets occupied. These policies expire every six months, we're premiums, and all, and this thing just kinda seems to be going a lot further, in the opposite direction than forward.
We can't guarantee anything here. We're not gonna guarantee anything.
By, by right...
But we're, we're telling you what the lawyer's been telling us.
By, by right...
It was wrong in the, in the, in the zoning, the district, now she's saying, hey, wait a minute, stand back and take a look at it. And, and the building is built, I mean...
By right, he can open his HVAC company if he finishes that portion of the building, and get a certificate of occupancy for the HVAC company business, because that's allowed by right in this district.
Which is what I really gotta do, is ask the boss why...
I told you that a month ago. We discussed that, and I said, yes, you can.
Uh, permitting the apartment, I'll tell you...
And then finish it, heat it, insurance will be less probably, because you're occupying it, rather than having an unoccupied building. Start using it, and then at least the money you're paying for it is helping to support, and then, or decide to abandon the project, one or the other, and then what you're gonna do with the rest of it.
Just cut it right now, just, just cut it off.
Ah, you know, I don't know, it's not up to me, but I mean, I'm just suggesting he would be allowed to do that by right, to finish it off for the business section, which is allowed by right.
Well, I think what I'm hearing from the board is that you would like to come back with the new request for...
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
I feel, I feel for you, but again, we're trying to get this right.
Yeah.
And can't stress enough that...
So am I.
I know, I know, I can't stress enough, variance is very tough with us. I gotta tell you straight up, very tough for us.
Everything has been easier comparatively?
No, I'm just saying that the, the V-word with us is, we just don't like giving it.
Existing structure or not.
I've got, we gotta look at everything, the whole picture.
Yep.
Gotta look at the whole picture. We're gonna have to look at the whole picture. But that's, that's where we're at with it.
If you're going to apply, variance requires hardship, and you would be advised, in my opinion, to provide information with regards to the hardship and how you see, and that way, they will, the board would have time to evaluate it and have any opinions they need to, based on the hardship, and whether or not they feel...
Situation you're in.
It's appropriate legally.
Yeah.
Because I know, I know they struggle with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I guess, maybe a little bit difficult to understand, in light of the fact that you got an 11-unit building next door, that there were multiple variances granted on, so I understand what the stretch is of the law. I also understand that your board, just as the other 351 boards of appeal in every community in the Commonwealth, has a large degree of discretion, and you've got, there's a talent who's been here, and will come back to see you and present the project as best he can, but it just, well, it's, it's, he's in good faith trying to do something...
You're right, yeah.
...we believe it would not be in way against the public good, or in detriment to the public good, and it's something that would be a benefit to the town, if employee people, who's gonna have a couple of... That building, you know, it's supposed to be used as a rest house, or as an accessory town.
All right, guys, you have something?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman, just one thing, and that's, I wonder would the board be agreeable to giving attorney Whitney and his petitioner just a copy of this opinion by attorney...
No, no, that's, that's something that we don't do.
All right, so here's why you should, we should be doing this, and that's simply, I think, anyway, in practice, the attorneys are on the same page, and we're really talking about modifying a petition to, to, you know, to do a variance, but that's not the reason that you should be giving this. This is an open meeting. This conversation for the last 10 minutes has constantly referenced this opinion by attorney Kurzwell. It does not involve anybody's employment agreement, it doesn't involve any private thing, we weren't in an executive session, and we're relying on this, and actually, in fairness, Nancy should be putting this with the minutes, because you've been discussing it, she should have it with the minutes, but at the very least, the petitioner should know what the opinion is that says that, you know what, it's not an accessory opinion building. This is an open meeting, and they should have...
Well, I would have to, I'd have to ask Amy that, if she wants us to get that.
It's, it's, I mean, at the end of the day, it's really not our position to be handing out documentation to any individuals. If they wanna file a public records request, let them do it with the town's record access officer, let them make a determination what information can be given out, we don't can.
Because we pay our town lawyer to give us information, and we're supposed to keep it, to keep it.
But, but, everything in this meeting is open to the public. Everything in this meeting is open to the public. If you don't want it, you have an executive meeting.
The board, the board is entitled to attorney-client privilege with our attorney. So if, if Mr. Whitney wants to have a conversation with our attorney, I don't think that would be...
It says right at the bottom, doesn't it? It says right there on the bottom, isn't it? The message, document.
You know, that's certainly something that could be entertained, but I don't think it's our position...
Privilege and confidence.
I don't think attorney Whitney really cares, but, because he probably, he literally referenced this without even looking at it, he referenced all the things they talked about, but I, I, I do have a problem with us relying... But I, I, I do have a problem with us relying on somebody else's opinion who's not in this room, where it's written down, and the petitioner, somebody who pays their taxes, is not able to see this. That seems to me goes against the idea of an open meeting law, you know?
Well, we could bring it up to Amy then, because I've been told that whatever she sends to us is to stay on the table and-
So let's do that. Because this comes up every meeting we have, where if there's, if there's an opinion that literally shoots down what a petitioner's trying to do, the lawyer is actually, and the petitioner is asking, talking in blindness, because they don't know-
But they're going to be asking why, and we're going to be telling them why, because our town lawyer said this, given the information. It's not up to us to hand them our conversations with the lawyer right off the bat.
That's okay, but we're not talking about conversation, we're talking about a document that you're using, and that you're referring to.
I just don't see us-
It's privileged and confidential.
It says it right on it.
Well, it's probably true that.
But I mean-
We have, it's up to us.
That wouldn't make sense if we asked for an opinion and then we couldn't tell them the opinion, that doesn't make sense. We're, we're asking the town lawyer our opinion about this because we want to get it right.
May I say, I appreciate your comments, attorney Burger. And the good thing, you know, there's no litigation here, there's no, there's no anticipated litigation here. If we want that, we would send a FOIA request.
Right, there you go.
And so-
I don't think it's an ambush, I think it's, it's-
I think, I think we have heard what the opinion is at Town Council to a sufficient degree to proceed, as we've spoken about tonight.
Yeah, that's very gracious of you.
I do want to just point out one thing, there is that we've been here three times-
I know, I know.
And not once has there been somebody here to object to this proposal.
I understand that.
It's, it's in the highway commercial zone. I think the board would acknowledge that there are multiple, multiple residences up and down the highway commercial zone. There are multiple residences that have been built by Mr. Gosling in the past three years.
All good points.
And all of them seem to coexist with the businesses around them, and to a fine degree such that they're actually, if you look at his buildings, he does a fine job. And I would suggest that Mr. Davidson would like to do the same with his property and make it as productive as possible. So hopefully, we can have immediate minds. And as I started to say earlier, the legislature did grant to you, in all reports of appeal in the Commonwealth, a great deal of discretion. So I know what you're up against when you're looking at variances under 48, and the requirements that an applicant must show for a variance, but I think we could do that under these circumstances. You know, as you say, the building's built, it's configured a certain way. If it was going to be an 1800 square foot shop, certainly there wouldn't be a second story put on the building. So there is a hardship there to be protected.
All right, so anything else, guys?
No, except one last thing. I do apologize, I hope I didn't cause any issue, but, but just on, on, on this thing, it probably is privileged. But remember, part of the privilege is that you can waive the privilege. And so we could simply waive if it was privileged, the privilege, and give it to any petitioners. And I think in future, we should think about that.
I think, again, I think before we go and do that, we need to talk to Amy about it, so.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, all right. Um, we don't need to open up the floor. Oh, wait a minute, I'm gonna open up the floor.
Am I allowed to speak?
I think so.
I mean, so Phil Mullin, Block Street, Abington, I'm on a butter, so I'm sitting down. Just thinking about this, it's an interesting thing. If you've seen the building, you know, it's a resi building, but in the back is a giant commercial garage. You know, I see the commercial garage, my, I see maybe one truck there every few days for a few minutes, all right? So, you know, as a butter, I don't think it would be a bad thing. An interesting spin on this is, of course, this is opinion from council, not fact or a ruling. I mean, we're saying, hey, we're looking for clarification. Seems to me the board could also look at it and say, you know what, the language is so convoluted on this that although Town Council says, we think it should be a variance to protect the town, the board could look at it and say, you know, there's no one here in opposition. The opinion is there to protect the board in litigation, but the odds of litigation in the next 30 days can be pretty slim. And if you went ahead with a special permit, that would expire when Mr. Davidson is in, sells the building. So we would have to revert to the original intended zone use. If he comes back in a month and he wins the variance, then that goes with the property from then on, that it's a mixed use. So it seems to me the board could rule and say, you know what, the language is really bad, it's probably, as a butter, it's probably not a bad use for the property. We can go forward, suffer the suns and arrows for 30 days, which probably isn't going to happen, and then he gets to use it as he sees it, and then when he goes and sells it, the use reverts to the zone.
I knew I shouldn't open up the floor.
You won't.
I knew I shouldn't open up to the floor.
I had to get this.
Yeah. Um, anybody else? Close it to the floor, thank God. All right, gentlemen, what are you, what are you thinking over here?
I'm just looking at something. Do you, variances continue with the, or once the-
Bravo.
What about the idea that attorney Whitney brought up, that this is a multi-unit?
I don't think it meets the definition.
It doesn't meet the definition of multi-unit, which also only needs a permit.
And you're still going to be in the same boat, right? Because it's going to be a mixed use. Yeah.
I don't know, I think we cover all, my, my opinion is, cover all bases for the variance. And we have to, have to look at this.
Multi-unit is a building exclusively, exclusively for residential use with three or more dwelling units.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't qualify, because you've got a mixed use.
And I mean, I can appreciate the opinion of the, the butter, but, you know, we do get into the position of, even though all our decisions don't necessarily have a, you know, conclusive effect or anything like that, somebody else could say, you know, well, they got in on a special permit, so if, you know, there was a similarly situated building, we'd have to consider that. I would be more inclined to go with the opinion of Town Council and just have it done right. I, I can understand that this is the third time that you've been here, and, you know, that was not our intent, and, you know, there's obviously some ambiguity here, but we do have to rely on the opinion of the people that were paying to give us opinions. And it's, you know, for your benefit as well as ours, I mean, if somebody was to come and challenge us, even though there's nobody here who seems to be, have any issue with it, I mean, we're on, our Town Council's on record essentially saying is they don't think it's lawful, as you submitted it. So, I do apologize, but that would be-
It, and then, okay. So where do you stand, or what would you like to do here?
I think you, I think I could also speak to Mr. Davidson, but I think you'd follow my advice.
Absolutely.
And would argue this petition, in favor of the final independent petition.
In that case, I would make-
This is right, too.
Yeah. It's not what we want to do, really.
No, I appreciate the position, I appreciate the fact that you're looking at the Town Council's advice and the building inspector's advice as well, so.
In that case, I'd, I'd make a motion to allow the petitioner's request for a draw of the petition without prejudice.
Second?
I second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Get back up here. Troublemaker. Can't go home.
I'm dead, graviously wounded.
Okay.
Being after 7:10 PM, the Abington Zoning Board Appeals will hear the petition of Patricia Barillet, 260 Carver Road, Plymouth, for a special permit to convert existing structure on premises to a two-family duplex-style property at 981 Bedford Street, under 17521A2, property located on Assessor's Map 60 Lot 28, in the highway commercial zone.
Sales for money.
Let me check. Is that some news? I'll just look.
Is this it?
I have the packet somewhere. Here it is.
So how are we doing?
I'm very good, thank you.
So what do we have here now? We have a business, an already accessory apartment, or?
Yeah, what this is, is, my folks are representing Patricia Barillet this evening before you. Ms. Barillet lived in the town of Abington for years at 981 Bedford Street. She brought up three children there and has owned that property since 1979?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, I'm sorry. And so, for years, you know, she lived in the front house, and back a number of years ago, in the eighties, and wing was built on to the back of the property.
Tore down the garage.
Yeah.
Built a two-story building.
Yeah.
That had a bridal shop.
Yeah. And so it has access on Bedford Street, the frontage, primary frontage on Bedford Street, but there's also a frontage going down Black Street. And for years, she ran the, she makes a little bridal shop there. And gave up the bridal shop a number of years ago because it was just so time consuming that she didn't have any time for her family. And since then, the property sat idle for quite a period of time. Back a couple of years ago, she came to Town Hall and was given a building permit to revise the hallway out back, which is about 1450 feet, about 1450 feet, to make it into an apartment. And she went forward with that plan, not knowing that she would have to come before your board to get your permission to do something. So the apartment has been sitting there unrealized for years. And so we're here tonight to ask for whether we should consider granting Ms. Barillet a special permit as provided for in Section 17521, to allow for- a two-family dwelling, or duplex, on the property. So, there will be no change to the configuration of the building. It is what it is. There is plenty of adequate shopping on the side, there is no access directly to Route 18. The parking is on the side down Black Street. The property is 14,350 feet. The front structure is quite, quite old. Do you have any idea when that was built?
Did 1800, the top of it, say?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the request.
So this property would go completely residential at that point?
Yes.
Okay. So Marshall, this meets the qualification for a duplex?
Two-family.
Separated by a fire.
What do you guys, was, was it, it was like a hallway or something built out of the, around the back of that, the bridal area? And then, was it a, an in-law that was put up there? That's what, what are you going to do with that, or you?
It's just being used for storage, the extra space.
Yeah, that in-law, are you going to leave, you're going to incorporate that into part of the main bill, your, your main house?
No, it's separate.
So is it almost a three-family, there's a-
Well, no, when you, there's the, the main house, and then there was the garage that I tore down, it's a two-story building. It's connected by an enclosed breezeway.
Okay.
If you go in the breezeway, you go to the right, you go in the main house, you go to the left, and you go into the apartment.
You can have into the apartment, and then now you, but that, you're converting the bridal shop in, already, as I understand, you've already converted it into an apartment without permits, but you can't have all three.
So the apartment, in-law, and a main house?
Right, that's what she's got, no.
No, I just have an apartment and the main house.
Okay.
That's all I have, is two. There's a vacant space there that's the storage, but there's just the house and the apartment.
Wasn't that second floor?
It's all one apartment, one bedroom apartment.
It's, it's with the, that's incorporated into the bridal shop now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. As long as it is, you wouldn't be able to have the three, I thought.
No, no.
It was originally, as I vaguely remember, there was the bridal shop, the main house, and an in-law apartment, wasn't there?
Well, the in-law-
You went down and it was upstairs. But now the in-law is in the bridal shop.
Right, but when I had the bridal shop, I didn't have an apartment.
Oh, it was just a second bedroom up there or something?
It wasn't anything, I used to work up there. When I had the bridal shop, the upstairs was where I stored and sewed.
All right. As long as it's just going to be two?
It is.
It's, then that's allowed, it will be considered a two-family. You know, I would be checking into the separation requirements and the spokes and that kind of stuff, that doesn't concern you guys. So, yeah, no, as long as we don't, we're not trying to incorporate an in-law along with a two-family. And I'll be verifying that when I go through to issue another certificate of occupancy for a second family.
Okay. No, sir.
No, I, I just not, although it's in the HC, it's on Bedford Street, it's all residential right around where that is, actually, so it would be in harmony. I know that we are supposed to, special permit, we're supposed to look at adjacent structures and uses in the district within which it's located. It's actually located in a residential area, it's all major residential.
Yeah, H20, yeah, H2.
So it's very in keeping with the, the surrounding area.
Yeah, I did some, I wanted to just do the, give it for a split zone, so the apartment would more effectively, for these.
So, okay, now, you're good? Open up the floor, close it to the floor. All right, so what do we have here, guys, what do you think?
It seems pretty straightforward, I think.
To do, nothing's being torn down or anything like that, or added on, I mean-
As Dennis said, it's in keeping with the, the other structure in the neighborhood, it's not going to overburden anything, so.
She's gonna have, I would like her to provide me with a print of what, I know it's already done, but I'm even going to need a blueprint of what she's intends to do, so I have that on record as to what's supposed to be there.
Okay.
And you will be working with the building inspector closely on this?
And then we'll come down and, you know, decide what has to be done to verify that the work that's been done without a permit has- the work that's been done without a permit has, meets the code to convert the...